Good evening and Happy New Year. This is the first meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City Schools for Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
As this is our organizational meeting for the coming calendar year, I'm going to start by requesting a nomination for Board President, please.
I'd like to nominate Beverly Wright.
I second.
Any discussion?
I guess I'll begin. I'm thrilled to support this nomination. Beverly has served on the board for a long time and has carried out a number of roles in that service on the board, most recently Vice President, which thank you, not an easy year to do that, but also in terms of leading a number of committees and participating for years. And also, I will add, as a graduate of Heights High, so I enthusiastically celebrate and support this nomination.
Beverly, I'd like to thank you for being willing to do this. It's a tough job, and I know you're up to the challenge, and I look forward to seeing you in this seat, assuming that all of my colleagues are as supportive as I am.
Thank you.
I'm also very excited about the opportunity to step down.
Don't tell her that now. No, it's a lot of work.
So if there are no more comments, Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I can go swap seats.
And nameplates.
Oh, this is very exciting.
You should get a picture.
Yeah, we should get a picture.
Oh, yeah, you can read it. Absolutely, you can read it now. You should get Beverly's family, too.
Thank you. Yes, of course.
Do a picture here, and then we'll have Beverly's family come for a picture.
Absolutely.
Oh, here, you need this. Because that's...
Okay, great.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Can you pass that to Beverly, please? Thank you. Yours. After that, see the chips. Yeah, you did this one. I went through both of my bags, I don't have it, and I'm trying to remember.
There's some microphones. She was here.
There you go.
I mean, it's not, wouldn't be a difficult thing to recreate.
You took a picture?
I did. Maybe a first picture after the President and Vice President.
Oh, just President and Vice President. And then we use your family, yeah.
We'll get your family.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank Malia for her year of service, serving as Board President, and I'd just like to read this acceptance notice. Dear Board Members, I would like to say thank you for your appointment as Board President. I hereby submit my acceptance for the said position. I express my gratitude for considering me worthy enough of this prestigious opportunity. While serving as President, I agree to serve according to Board Policy 0173. Poseid all public meetings, call special meetings to the Board, appointments of all committees, sign notes, minutes, conveyance, contracts, and other legal instruments for which the signatures of the President is called. Assist in preparation of Board Agenda. I am ready to perform all the duties conferred upon me. I will try my best to serve the District, students, and families by means of my excellent performance and hard work. No element of carelessness would ever be shown by me in the task assigned. I am also looking forward to building my report in form of healthy relationships with all staff, students, and community members. Achievements of the District's goals will be my priority. I want to say it will be a pleasure for me to serve the Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, excuse me, I would like to make a nomination for Jody Serini to be Vice President.
I'd second that.
And I will enthusiastically support that. You have done this job before extremely well.
Yeah, I really appreciate your willingness to do this, both of you, your willingness to do this, but Jody, I think that, you know, having served both as Vice President and President, and you were excellent at both.
Yes.
I appreciate you taking this on.
I also appreciate you taking this on, and I really feel like we have the A-Team working for us now.
Well, we're fortunate, that's for sure.
Should we take a vote?
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Thank you, I'm honored to serve again in this capacity.
Thank you.
We're changing pictures and whatnot.
Picture time?
Yeah.
We don't own the treasure pro term, ten? That's not...
Oh, we can do that one, too.
Yeah, okay.
Is that a nomination?
We just need a motion to... Yes, you can do it as a nomination if you want.
I would like to nominate Dan to do it again.
And I would like to second that.
Yes.
I'm not going to say thank you.
That's the one job I haven't done, Dan.
You want that?
Okay, so we take a vote?
You can take a vote.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Do pictures.
Picture time.
Yeah. So do you want to do us together and then Beverly's family? Okay. Pass to me before I slide in.
Just don't run backwards.
I know.
You don't have to, I mean, it's fine, just do the... I'm just used to getting up for all the pictures.
I don't like that.
You're fine. We got work to do, let's get out of here.
Okay. Two directions.
Yes, so for those who want to continue to stay in the meeting, feel free to, and those who want to leave, I know it's my family, so...
Nice to see you all.
I see it all, thanks for coming.
Thank you, okay. Okay, next, we're going to start with the approval of the consent agenda.
I motion we approve the consent agenda, or consider the consent agenda.
Second.
Can we take a vote on the consent agenda?
I think we should discuss it, if there's any discussion.
This is the organizational consent agenda, so this is, you know, once a year...
Yes.
Those once a year things that you all would typically approve. So if there are any questions about anything that's here in it, you know, it's setting the dates and times of your regular board meetings, investment of funds, a lot of these are statutory obligations for the Board to approve at the organizational meeting, alternative tax budget, you know, blanket purchase order maximums, you know, designating me as your public records training person, our membership in O E P I, and O S B A is also in here. Attorney, listen, legal counsel that's approved, not that they won't be used.
I think the most exciting thing is, right, the most exciting thing is that the mileage rate is going up.
Mileage rate went up.
And we spend too much time driving down to Columbus, so...
You know, I think it's worth pointing out that, you know, a couple of little things. First of all, O E P I is an excellent organization that does really valuable education-related research, and, you know, we talked, we have, we really struggled with maintaining our relationship with O S B A last year.
Yes.
And while, I think I speak for all of us, we had real struggles with some of their positions, especially around their decision to leave the N S B A and then affiliate themselves with another organization, the reason that we decided to maintain our relationship with O S B A is because it benefits the District financially, and that, you know, while we all hold very strong commitments to, you know, sort of our belief system, the school district, at the end of the day, is who we are serving, not our individual belief systems, and it is the district that's being well-served by our membership in O S B A.
So do we agree, or we all, I mean, we have agreed, but do we agree to continue the services with O S B A?
Is everyone in agreement?
Yeah. This includes renewing our membership for the year.
What we get is a lot financially, and it's well worth the investment.
In particular, with the workers' compensation.
I think, as Dan put it plainly just a few minutes ago, fine.
Well, but the other thing, of course, is that as members of, or as a district belonging to O S B A, we as Board members have the ability, and I would also say the duty, to mold their policy in a way that is reflective of our community's values, and, you know, that's our job. We were elected to represent the community, and that's in, you know, to represent them at O S B A in addition to everywhere else we go. So we have the ability to improve their stance on certain things by being engaged and doing, oh, extra work.
And we have done that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, I mean, the legislative platform being something you know intimately, right, Jody, and it's just, and so we need to continue doing that, that's the responsibility that comes with it, just to prevent them from going down the wrong path.
Yeah, you can't impact them from the outside.
Right.
Okay, one thing, the dates and times of the regular board meetings, we're going to just stick with what we have, not looking at any changes, or is anyone considering...
I don't see any reason to change the pattern unless something...
Something pops up, something pops up, but we can, we can shift on the fly.
Yeah.
I think as a, as a rule, I think these are perfectly good dates.
Well, I think the community knows those dates.
Yes.
And staff is, knows those are the dates when they need to be here for the meetings.
And other government entities and organizations are all working around a known calendar, so if we start messing with the calendar, then the domino effect could be pretty messy.
I would like to say it's somewhat related, you know, I think we had a very constructive meeting last time, and I think it was more constructive for us and Scott and Liz, I'm not sure it was that constructive in the end for all of staff members, so maybe if we can be a little bit more cognizant of, okay, well, we're running along, we're talking about things where staff really doesn't need to be here anymore, I think we could let them go. They've got families, and, you know, they, they are here, it's, it's a job obligation, probably more of an obligation sometimes than you'd probably want to admit it, but I really, it's great when we get the opportunity to discuss things. Obviously, it's done in public, but, you know, the last half of that meeting, I think it ran a lot longer than any of us anticipated.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, certainly, bring that back to the Cabinet and talk about a good, you know, once we get to the past, the Treasurers' Report, that's a good time, you know.
Yes.
Leave if necessary. George says no, he never wants to leave.
You're waiting with patient breath, aren't you?
Have to get him a less comfortable chair.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, can we take a vote?
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Scott is going to give me a quick one-on-one training.
Yeah, you're all good, so you're just adjourning, there's not even formal adjournment, you're closing this meeting and moving right into the regular meeting.
Okay, so...
You have to give me one minute to end this one.
Okay, great, can I?
Into regular meeting. No, you don't even need to roll.
Okay.
We'll go on right to awards and recognition.
All right, and we're going to start with awards and recognition.
All right. Good evening and welcome. I hope that everyone had a great holiday season with loved ones. We are still out of session for school, as you know, but our central office is in session, and we're excited to see our students back next week. This is also a very special month, January is Board Member Recognition Month, and this is the month where Board members across the nation are acknowledged for the tireless work that they do on behalf of the District's students and community. It has been my pleasure to work with all of our Board members, this is my fourth year working with you all, and I definitely consider myself blessed and very, very lucky. Your level of commitment, your fearlessness, your boldness, your leadership in the state is unmatched. We are certainly a district that has a name and a position, and are really advocates, at the end of the day, for students and our families. So I thank you guys all for everything you do, our one-on-one conversations, I've learned a lot from you. This seems like it's my last meeting, it's not.
Better not. But it's not.
I'm going to worry about this, it's not. Woo, you got a big test, isn't it? No, no, no. But it, but I really have learned so very much, you all have really brought a lot of both good ideas, but also a good focus and push for me and for the District, so that we can continue to improve and continue to serve our students at the highest, the highest levels. I do, I just thank you all, and when I consider this, these past couple of years and the different things that people have had to face in boards, in board meetings, I'm just so happy that I am in Tiger Nation, serving as the superintendent. So I want to salute our Board members, one by one, first, our new President, Beverly Wright, and our new Vice President, Jody Serini, our Treasure Pro Term, Dan Heinz, Malia Lewis, and Jim Posh, thank you very, very much, and happy January Board Recognition Month, and we have certificates, and we're going to take a picture together, so let's all take our pictures.
Thank you. Do you want us to have these in front of us?
Yes, please.
We have to do what we impose on everybody else, right?
Yes, you do, yes, you do.
Come on. One's here. One's here.
One's here.
Yeah, you have quite a few of them.
Just two.
So we do not have a student report because the students are still out, and we also, we're going to start a new feature to the board meetings called School Spotlight, where we'll have a different school come and share something unique and special and interesting happening for the month, but we will start in February, because, again, the teachers and the students are out right now for that.
So the one that's on the agenda tonight, we'll just do in February?
Do it in February, yeah.
Awesome.
I look forward to that, thank you.
That's a great idea.
I like it.
And that concludes the awards and recognitions, and my School Spotlight, that didn't happen, but will happen in February.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have statement from the audience, no statements. Okay, moving right along. Can I get a motion to approve their consent agenda?
A motion we, we discuss, discuss, or consider the consent agenda?
I second.
Thank you, any discussion?
It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, no discussion, so Mr. Heinz.
Mr. Posh. Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Will we be getting another round of Board Policy Updates?
Uh...
There was some on the horizon, I thought, in the previous batch, maybe when staff is back.
Correct, yes, I think at the next meeting will be the first three of those.
The next policy review meeting is on Monday, the 16th, and then that batch will be coming to us.
Would it be appropriate for me to add something that I'd like to be, to look into on that? Is now an appropriate time to talk about that?
Sure.
So as Liz alluded to, we've been very fortunate, we've, you know, haven't experienced some of the troubles that have been experienced in other school boards in the area. We all have friends on other school boards in the area, and one thing that I think that we should consider is a modification of our public comment to include only member, only community members. Many school districts have found that there are firebrands from all over northeastern Ohio coming to use local Board of Education meetings as a way to promote their beliefs, and so there are going to school districts that do not have a policy limiting public comment to members of the, of the community, and I would like for us to look into perhaps adopting, adding that to our policy.
That's really interesting. We haven't had the sorts of issues that other school boards have had in the, you know, during the pandemic, but there's always the possibility of attracting people who want to come and make a big statement of some sort, and use us as their platform.
So it's worth, it's just worth considering.
Okay. Since I'm still technically sitting on the policy review, would you mind sending me and Paul an email about it?
Sure.
Together, and then?
I can give you some districts to look at their policies also.
Thank you.
I think that's a good suggestion, Dan.
So along the.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, so along the same lines, can I add something to be looked at? There was a very preliminary conversation I had with Lindsay Ginko, our lawyer, about a year ago about who could run for school board and, you know, whether you've been in the community for a certain amount of time, whether you've not been a certain amount of time, or are you actually a voter in the community? And I'm not sure we ever look at our policy from that perspective. And around the same time, OSBA put out a summary of what other school districts were doing, and I think we should look at what OSBA has come up with as a summary and run it by Lindsay to see if that's something appropriate we should add in the policy. I mean, this is not taking anything away from an existing community member that wants to run.
Yeah, it'll be interesting, I'll be interested to see how we, because my gut is just that the, you know, the state attorney general sort of governs that area. But, I'm sorry, the secretary of state, not the attorney general, the secretary of state, but it certainly is worth looking at.
But I do remember OSBA put out something about adding a residency requirement that you have to live in, within the school district boundaries.
Yeah. It was some, it's like in that, like, summary backpack piece that they give us.
But that's all, we already have that policy, that you have to be a resident.
Uh, I'm not sure we do or not.
I'm not sure it's clarified.
I think it needed some clarity.
All right, we'll look into that. Any further discussion?
We have policy about residency requirement for students. I don't see anything coming up for a school board in our current policies.
Thanks, Mr. Gaynor. Okay. Oops, superintendent's update.
Okay. I just have one quick slide that I will show because we just had a board meeting. Am I sharing? How do I share? Not sharing? Okay. We just had a board meeting on December 20th. Okay, here we go. I got it. Yeah. So, so really, these are just some important upcoming dates. When we return next week, we have a week left until the first quarter is, or the second quarter is over, the first semester is over. So quarter two ends on January 13th, and quarter three will begin on January 17th. We also will have the grand opening, grand opening of the Metro Health Clinic at Heights High. There'll be a ribbon cutting at 1:00 PM, and we'll have the grand opening from 1:00 to 4:00. So I look forward to seeing everyone there. It'll be very, very exciting to really highlight that partnership and just the, I can't believe that it happened so quickly, actually. So kudos again to George. And then we have work sessions coming up, so on January 24th, our CTE update, and we will have our first semester district data work session on February 21st. Just wanted to make sure that everyone had those dates. Again, short updates because we just had a meeting.
Okay. So the, are we having a meeting on the 17th, on the 14th of February? No, we wouldn't. It was the 7th and the 21st. Got it.
Valentine's Day, Jim.
It's all about Valentine's.
Actually, I think there's a lay facilities meeting.
I was going to say, there is a lay facilities committee meeting, though, on Valentine's Day, yeah. Not quite sure how that happened.
Where's the romance?
Okay. So next on the agenda is the president's report, or Scott, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And since I'm just.
No, no.
Oh, sorry. Three things, Scott.
All right, so yes, the, just a couple of quick things before the three things. I just want to echo Liz's comments about, you know, appreciating the work of the boards, the work you do all the time and effort. And it's, you know, having been, having heard from other districts and been around for a few years, you know, it's, it is, it's nice to have a board that really is committed and cares and, you know, and, you know, when you see some of the videos of the boards who fight and, 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 you know, backstab, and they have to expel members of the board for this and that and the other, it's really, you know, it's really a good thing to have a really caring and committed and knowledgeable board. So I echo that, and appreciate you all on Board Appreciation Month. And also, you know, you probably noticed in the organizational meeting, because I know this comes up particularly occasionally in, in public forums about how much money you all make and how much, how you get cars and all this kind of stuff.
Oh, it's those cars, yeah.
So let me tell you.
Figure out where that's parked.
For the record, there are no cars. And, you know, you saw that, you know, it references Ohio Revised Code in, in that organizational meeting in terms of what you're compensated, but it's $125 a meeting for a maximum of $5,000 per year. And, you know, when you consider the amount of time and energy that's put into that, that's, it's really a volunteer position. So again, it's, you know, I'm sure everyone greatly appreciates that. So I want to throw that out there, and then also, well, we'll talk about the audit here in a second when we get to that point. So three things for January. We had them locked and loaded and ready to go for this month, even though we're kind of back to back here, as Liz did mention. We, again, are with our three things, trying to inform and educate all stakeholders regarding district finances and school funding in the state of Ohio. So the three things we have this month, the first is the ACFR, which we, you know, used to call the. We'll hold a second. Okay. So we have the ACFR, which is our Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which used to be our CAFR, or Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Why we flip the A and the C, I'm not sure about that.
Can we just still call it the CAFR?
We will. I think that's right. So, so we did just complete the audit, and the audit is part of the CAFR. So our Audit of Financial Statements for Fiscal Year ended June 30, 2022. Again, we had an unqualified opinion, and that's a clean opinion for the audit for Fiscal 2022. And after, I think, the next couple of days, that audit will be available on the outer states website for anyone who wants to take a look at that. We did last week submit the CAFR to GFOA and ASBO for, in their, their ongoing Excellence in Financial Reporting programs, which we've received for several years now. And we also have on this link, and thank you, Caitlin, the, a link to the 22 CAFR or ACFR. We're, we will have a few printed copies. We do have a few old-school folks who like to have the paper. So we, if a community member would prefer a paper copy, they're available in my office, and we'll make sure you get one of those. Otherwise, it's all there electronically. But that is, is done. And again, it's, you know, everyone's required to have audited financial statements, everyone's required to do GAAP financial statements, which we talked about versus cash, but we do the CAFR, which, again, is kind of, you know, the gold standard and, and, you know, has all that supplementary information and kind of additional stuff that, that we think residents want to see in our effort to be transparent. Any questions about the CAFR? I can answer.
I was intrigued by the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, this summary page, because it gives you a sense of sort of large chunks of money and where the, where they go. You know, and obviously, the largest chunk of federal money we've received in the past couple of years has been the ESER funds and ARPA relief funds, and that's a big chunk of money, obviously. But after that, you know, what do we do? We are a Title I school, so we receive and spend federal money to help specifically because we're a poverty district, and food. We feed kids and, and we feed the community at large as well. And I think it's important to remember that because it makes a tremendous impact on the community, that we receive these federal grants and we use them to distribute food. So not just to students in the buildings, but also through our food market days at the elementary schools every month. It's just, you know, we're an educational institution, but nobody learns if they're hungry, so you have to start by feeding everybody.
Absolutely. All right, well, any time, any questions come up about that? If you do get an opportunity to review the document, feel free to just reach out and let me know that, and that is also for all members of the community as well. And I didn't pay Malia, but this appropriate lead in, when we're talking about grant funds, to the next item that we want to make sure that people are aware of or understand, and that's called maintenance of effort. And we've been spending a lot of time and struggling a lot with this this year, and all districts have, because what happens is IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act, says that you have to continue to spend the same amount on, of local dollars on special ed services. And, and so getting some of those federal grant funds requires you, you're not allowed to supplant with them, meaning you're not allowed to use that to replace something you're already paying for. You have to do that on top of what you're already doing, and you have to demonstrate that you're continuing year after year to spend the amount of money you spent the last year. And if, if it's not meant, and you know, there are reasons, you know, if you have a significant loss of students, or if you have staff attrition, or those kinds of things, you can explain that to ODE, but ODE has reached out to us this year and most other districts, and, you know, largely COVID-related kinds of things. And, but because of the federal requirements are saying, we want you to justify why you spent less money in '22 on students with disabilities than you did in Fiscal '21. So we've had to spend a significant amount of time, and we're still going through that process, to justify to ODE why, you know, we had fewer students that were here, we had fewer staff people, we had staff vacancies, you know, all those kinds of things that happened during COVID to many districts. It was funny, Karen's not here, but Karen Liddell Anderson at one point said, can't we just write COVID in the explanation box and be done? And, you know, that would be great, but we can't. So, so just one of those things that I think people don't necessarily know about or aren't aware of, but we wanted to make sure that people understand because I think this is going to become more of an issue as we, as we move ahead, and actually, for the first time for our district, became an issue this year, that we're in the process of trying to explain and address. And at the end, third bullet there says if a district fails MOE, if they're unable to adequately explain it to ODE's satisfaction, then they will actually take your grant money, you know, for the following year or the current year and reduce it by the amount of money that, that they think.
So we're required to use local funds in the same or larger amount than the previous year?
Yes.
And if we don't, then they take away federal funds?
We have to explain why.
We have to explain why, or they could take away federal funds, yes. Correct.
Or we could also, I believe, and please correct, I think you, we would, we might have to refund some of it.
Yes, exactly. Well, what they would do, yeah, they would call it a refund, but it would actually be, they would just reduce our current grant money to get the refund for the previous year.
As I was looking over this, I was curious how, because we service so many students who are not our students. How does that play into the mix? I mean, is it just more documentation for those who manage, those CHUH employees who manage those students at privates?
It would be, the bulk of the dollars that we're looking to justify, though, are our, our staff with our students.
Okay.
That's really that.
Got it. Okay.
That's really the majority of where the money is.
Now, say, Scott, if we, if there is an increase in the budget, we're spending more money. Will we have to justify that, too?
Nope, then we're good. They're happy. It has to be the same or more.
So this seems to me like an, I'm opening a horrible can of worms here. This is a structural thing that encourages, forces school districts to increase the amount of money they spend on special education. Would that then be considered a driver for identification? Because, you know, if you look at the state average of students with an IEP or a 504 plan, our district has four or five percentage points more students on an IEP or a 504 than the Ohio average. I'm, I'm kind of trying to figure out what the driver is here. Because there are reasons to seek an identification for one's child, because then you can access services that might help your child be more successful academically. But then, on the other hand, there's also, from the district's perspective, a need to keep spending the same amount of money or more. I just, this is like.
You're right, that's a whole can of worms.
This is, I'm sorry.
You know, it seems to me also, like, I approach, I don't approach it really as a problem, per se. I like the accountability. I, I think that, that we should be the beacon of accountability, and we're, we're well-suited for it, we do a good job at it. It's a good example of what some others who are in education don't do also, doing it so well. I mean, it's a really important thing that we do. Taxpayers send an enormous amount of money to educate our kids, and we should be accountable for, for every nickel. But I also think that it's worth pointing out that sometimes the definition of, of special ed moves and changes. For instance, there's been a real push over the past few years to include highly gifted students.
Right, twice exceptional.
You know, in that definition and justifying the dollars being spent to help to extend the learning that they're, that they're receiving. So it's not, I think many of us have an, sort of an image of a special ed student that is very limited and rather outdated. And so it's a nice opportunity to just remind people that, that, you know, it, there's a lot of variation within the umbrella of special ed, underneath the umbrella of special ed, so.
And then, you know, as society has restricted the definition of normal to a narrower and narrower band of humanity, that perforce increases the percentage of humanity that fits outside that band, right? I mean, all these things are connected. It's a big can of worms. I'll shut up now.
And to your point, you know, you would see that there would be, you know, there could be districts who might, you, you could question, you know, what drives certain expenditures or certain initiatives in terms of some of these requirements, but that probably varies.
Yeah, no, I mean, I want every child who walks into our buildings to receive absolutely the best services that that kid needs. And so I'm not in any way complaining about the money. I'm just sort of intrigued about how this is a national phenomenon. And so, you know, the gods in charge of everything, who we all bow down to, are creating a system that's sort of weird, so.
Agreed. Any other questions on MOE? We'll get back and let you know, you know, when it's all said and done, that we've, you know, managed to meet ODE's requirements for this past year in that respect. The last item we have here is inside Milich. So we've been talking about things that could be causing tax bills to increase. Jim, to your question before about do other entities, are other entities' property taxes subject to House Bill 920, they are. Bill 920, they are, which is what we assume, but I did verify that. But inside millage is something that could cause your property tax bill to increase. So it is unvoted millage, up to 10 mills that any community can have, and it's shared by all the local governments. So the city, county, and the school district can have up to 10 unvoted mills that grow with inflation, that they can, you know, do with as they will. So inside mills, as it says here, not subject to House Bill 920, and therefore increases property values increase. And for us here in the district, we have 4.45 inside mills. So there is some small amount, and I did not go into what the other entities have as their inside millage, but we could do that.
So it's a total of 10 mills for all of the entities?
It's a total of 10 mills for all entities. Can be no more than 10. But of the 10 that are available for our communities, we have 4.45. And so residents will see small increases in their property tax bills because those mills do grow with inflation. It's not substantive in terms of the overall budget for us, but it is, again, something that could be causing small fluctuations with individual property tax bills. So...
That's interesting, because I wonder how that's split since we have different cities. Do they get, you know, does Cleveland Heights and University Heights have the same amount of inside millage and the county gets the rest, or...
Yeah, or, you know, it could be if the county has a set amount, which they would, and the district has a set amount across the cities, which we would, then each city could, would be levying their own amount of unvoted millage. And there are some communities that I've heard of who are not up to their full 10-mill limit. And so that becomes a big conversation, because then any of those entities can say, hey, we're going to pass an unvoted levy, you know, or an inside millage.
In order to max out that 10 mills, right.
To max it out. And then that, you know, becomes a big thing with the communities, because then they get angry that you're, you know, passing levies that aren't voted.
So it's safe to assume that we're at a total of 10 in our community?
I think that's right. And I think most communities are, but there are a few that weren't. And once communities start toying with the possibility of saying, oh, well, let's grab another mill, then that becomes problematic. So...
Highly contentious.
As you can imagine. So, yes. So again, inside millage is something, though, that could be causing some of those fluctuations that homeowners are seeing in their tax bills. And that is it for me in terms of the three things for January.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Okay, Board President's Report. And of course, I don't have one other than I thank you all for nominating and voting me in into this position. I know I can count on our awesome team. If there's anything that, you know, I'm not sure about, I can always call on you. And again, I just want to thank you all for trusting me, you know, to sit in this seat this year, and I look forward to it.
Appreciate you being there, Beth.
This might be a good time to bring up the various committees and things, because we've had positions in the past year, each of us, and then the question is, do we want to switch things up? The list I made last week when I was thinking about this, in no order at all. The Northeast Ohio Board Consortium, which used to be the Board President's Zoom, has changed its scope a little bit and been broadened out. And so there's room for two of us to participate every couple of weeks in those calls.
When do those take place usually?
Well, they have been happening during the day on Wednesdays, and they're about to change. So there's a doodle poll, which I forwarded to everybody, because they're going to change to meet the needs of this year's people, right? And I know there's some talk about perhaps alternating and having one in the evening and one during the day each month, so that more people can participate.
So Molly and I have been participating over the last year with the consortium. And, I mean, I do like being a part of the consortium, because there's a lot of valuable information.
It's very, yeah, it's a good place to sort of talk to your peers and find out what other school districts are facing and get feedback on, you know, am I completely off the wall with this idea, or does this make sense, you know? And we only have ourselves here in this board, but talking to other school board members, it gives you better context.
Well, you don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Right, oh, that. So that's, there's two spots for that. Then the Legislative Liaison is in, technically, it's an OSBA sort of thing, but it's also just being aware of what's going on in Columbus and bringing a summary to this group. Doesn't require one to drive down to Columbus all the time, but it might provoke one to do so. Then there's a board rep to the Reaching Heights Board of Directors. I've done that for the past two, maybe three years. There's the board rep for the Heights Schools Foundation. You've done that. Then the Lay Facilities Committee is two people, or has been two people. Policy Review Committee, I did this past year in 2022. Who did that before? I forget.
I did it for a while.
I think Beth did it, too.
PTA Council Rep. There's something I don't quite understand called the Student Success Liaison through OSBA. I don't know what...
I don't think we have that.
I don't know.
I thought we had just, for the last couple of years, whoever the board president was, that they were assigned that role as well. You get a lot of emails, and then sometimes there's a meeting of, at OSBA, but sometimes not.
Indeterminate responsibilities.
Did you repeat that? What?
It's called the Student Success Liaison. And then the last two I could think of were the Advocacy Task Force, which you've done. Is that ongoing? And is that separate from Legislative Liaison? I'd see it.
It should be. So all of this sort of gives me the idea that, and because another one that you didn't mention was early childhood, which has been in a few incarnations over the years. It seems to me that many of these are superintendent task forces and committees. And so perhaps the next step in this discussion should be sort of Liz deciding which of these, perhaps not all of them even need to move forward. Perhaps we need to, we got to look at membership in them. Is it time to look for more members, new members, or have some of them live their life expectancy?
And we also may have other superintendent task forces, you know, that we want to focus on.
Right, right. So I think that this is a good start, that we need to ask Liz to come back to us with.
Okay. And then the last thing I have on my list was the Ed Choice lawsuit, because tomorrow is the one-year anniversary of filing that suit. And I thought, yay!
Speaking of trips to Columbus.
Right. See, right. So that's a long list of things. And divide and conquer works fairly well as an approach, because otherwise, we all get stretched too thin.
And I think we would, Liz, we can discuss that and bring that up at the next meeting. And board members can, we can communicate with you all and see which committees you'd like to serve on.
Some school districts view the Legislative Liaison position as sort of just an opportunity to update the board and the community about current legislative issues. And I think it probably could easily be folded into the Advocacy Committee.
Yeah, and I think that's really important with all the changes that's happened in downstate.
I'd be happy to take that on.
Definitely have to keep a close eye on that.
Folks wanted to send that my way.
Okay. Any new business?
Well, I can actually peel off straight from what Molly has been talking about. On the 17th, the grand opening, I had mentioned last time that perhaps we should invite Juanita Brent, Kent Smith, and Tom Jackson, our new member of the State Board of Education because of redistricting. But something really interesting happened within the past couple of days in Columbus, which is that in December, at the end of December, the ruling party chose a guy named Derek Marin to be the Speaker of the Ohio House. They designated, they just basically anointed him. He would be their leader.
I thought he wasn't voted in today.
Well, he was picked in December, but the official vote happened today.
Right.
And he wasn't elected. Instead, Jason Stevens is the newly minted Speaker of the Ohio House. And he was, he received unanimous support of the nonruling party in Columbus, because he made some promises that I think are particularly interesting. He promised to support more bipartisan maps, which I think we can all get interested in. But he also promised to pursue fully implementing the new school funding. Which, you know, it's a funny string of words, because it's full implementation of the school funding formula, but this being the second biennial budget, it's actually, it would actually only take them up to 50%, only in Ohio. So he agreed to pursue the 50% funding of the new system, which would be more. And also supporting workers and supporting increased infrastructure, which supports all of Ohioans. So I got to thinking that perhaps, Liz, we should invite Speaker Stevens to the opening of the health clinic and give this an opportunity for him to get to know Tiger Nation a little bit and to see some of the important work that's being done by districts like ours.
What's the first name?
Jason Stevens. He's from a place I wasn't familiar with. Can't find his site.
From Monclova Township? Oh, no, no, that's where Marin is from.
Yeah.
Getaway, Ohio.
Getaway.
Well, maybe he wants to get away up to Tiger Nation.
Residence is Getaway, Ohio. I don't know where that is.
I have no idea where that is.
That's great.
Now I got to look that up.
Well, we should visit his home, too.
Yeah. See, field trips.
Interesting. Lawrence County, wherever that is.
Any new business? The unfinished business. Yeah, you sure?
Probably some monkey business, but nope.
Correspondence and announcements.
Well, we've been talking about the opening of the Metro Health Clinic.
That's going to be exciting. And it would be really good if all of us could. I know, Dan, you probably would be.
I'm going to take the day.
Oh, okay, good. If we can all be present.
I already are. We paid today.
Yes, good. Okay. All right, so if that is it, I'm going to close this meeting. Can I get a motion to?
A motion to adjourn.
Adjourn the meeting, all right.
A second.
Okay. Thank you all so much.
We got to vote.
We got to vote.
Oops.
Can I have a, yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you all and good night.